Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll go ahead and get this meeting called to order. If I can have everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every due justice for all.
Okay, are there any changes to the agenda?
Just one, we'll go ahead and remove item six point one. It was added on the agenda as a placeholder in case we needed to continue talking about the budget, but we don't need to at this meeting, so we can go ahead and remove it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from council?
I move to approve.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
Aye, both aye.
Okay, our next item is awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. We have three items tonight. The first one is for Corporal Simons' retirement presentation.
Good evening, mayor, council, city manager, staff, and community. Tonight, we have a, I'm honored actually to, this retirement of Chris Simons, which I tried to get him to prolong, but he wouldn't do it. Because he's. But please come up here for right now, Chris, thank you. I do want to read something before we present this, and also, we do have a video clip of his, when he logged off for the last time here for the Kalinga Police Department. So, here it goes. Police Corporal Stephen Christopher Chris Simons started his career with the Kalinga Police, with the city of Kalinga in December of nineteen ninety-three at the Claremont Custody Center as a correctional officer, ID number five oh four. For the next six years, Chris worked his way up to the position of Correctional Sergeant. In August of nineteen ninety-nine, Chris left Claremont to attend the Tulare Kings Police Academy, and he had always wanted to be a police officer. In December nineteen ninety-nine, Chris graduated from the police academy as part of Class Ninety. Chris was hired as a police officer by the Kalinga Police Department in March of two thousand, ID number eight seventy-nine. For the next twenty-four years, Chris worked hard and held the position of Corporal and Sergeant within the department. Some of Chris' collateral duties included being the field training officer, school resource officer, DARE instructor, the department's gang officer, and advisor to the Department Explorer Program. Chris has been a vital part of the department and has shown that he cares about this community and has been a prime example of a team player. Chris is not just a coworker, he's a friend. Therefore, on behalf of the men and women of the Kalinga Police Department and the citizens of Kalinga, dated this second day of May two thousand twenty-four, I would like to thank Police Corporal Chris Simons for his thirty years of service to the citizens of Kalinga, the city, and the department, and I would like to congratulate him on his well-deserved retirement.
Thank you, sir.
This plaque states Stephen Chris Simons presented to in recognition of your dedicated service to the Kalinga Police Department, the community of Kalinga, December nineteen ninety-three to May of two thousand twenty-four, City of Kalinga. And if Larry could play that clip?
All right, this is a logo.
Kalinga A, thank you for your thirty years of service for protecting this community of Kalinga, twenty-four years with the Kalinga Police Department, and six years with the Claremont Custody Center. We all wish you well in your future endeavors. Thank you for all of your hard work, guidance, and dedication. Congratulations on your well-deserved retirement. Corporal Simons, final sign-off, April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, at eighteen oh one.
Thanks, one-two. It's been a pleasure, the last twenty-four years, thank you for the guidance and friendship. Have a wonderful, well-deserved retirement. Talk to you later. Bye.
Kalinga A, it's been my honor and privilege serving the citizens of Kalinga for the last twenty-four years and working beside some of the finest men and women at the police department. I have many memories I will cherish of my time with the police department and will miss many of my coworkers, my family, as I move forward in my life. Good work with y'all and stay safe. Kalinga A, with my final.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm still going to call you Officer Simons, even though you're retired. You're going to be that till the day you're gone, and the day I'm gone as well. So, I've got something for you on behalf of the city council, the entire city staff, and the city of Kalinga. What this man has done in his entire career is he's helped all of our kids, and I'm sure some of our grandkids as well, stay straight. Kept them guided, so they would stay out of trouble. And has actually got to see a lot of them grow up and move on to bigger, better things. With that being said, I present you the key to the city on your retirement, and thank you.
Thank you. Just, just a big thank you to the citizen of Kalinga for allowing me.
You're definitely going to be missed, that's for sure. I can tell you that myself.
Thanks. Thank you.
Darren, you should be able to speak.
Hi, Chris, it's Darren.
Hi, Darren.
Sorry, I can't be there, but I figure this is better than nothing. I have something to say to you. Congratulations on your thirty-year career with the city of Kalinga. I would like to wish you a happy and well-deserved retirement. During my time with the city, I had several opportunities to work alongside you for, alongside you for the twenty years. I must say, it was a pleasure to be your partner, but most of all, your friend. I would like to thank you for all your hard work and dedication during my tenure at the police department and your commitment to the city, department, and most of all, the citizens of Kalinga. I wish you the best on your retirement. Good luck, buddy.
Thank you, brother.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to our next item.
Sorry, can I say something real quick? I just want to say, so when I started with the city in two thousand and six, obviously, Simons was already here. But I can't recall ever running into him when he was not happy to be at work. Every single time that I saw him, he's been happy to be here, and he likes to come around and spread joy and make sure everybody else is enjoying their day at work, and so he is going to be truly missed.
Anyone else? Would anyone else like to say something before he takes off?
Don't make me cry.
That sounds like a challenge, so if anybody wants to say anything to try to make him cry, now's your time.
It is windy today.
I can come back and talk some more. Okay, seeing that there's none, thank you for your service and good luck with your future. Take care of the kids. Okay, now we'll move on to the next item. Recognition of Kalinga wrestlers Ivan Zavala, Lexi Grineal, Naieli, Blan, huh? Zuma Gonzalez, and Zuma Mendoza.
Hello, guys. Who else?
Can they come out here for the picture?
Yes, actually, yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Good afternoon, you guys. First of all, I want to say I'm very honored to, for the city to award these wonderful athletes. One thing I want to say is it's an honor to be here with Coach Grineal. And his staff have done a wonderful, wonderful job. If you guys knew the dedication, the work, the hours that these, this team does, and the coach and the staff does, I mean, it takes, it takes a long, you know, and they're volunteers, you know? So, for these guys to compete in, in very competitions and very gruesome training, I mean, I give it up to them. They have one of the hardest jobs there is out there, especially as an athlete. And one thing to, to be in school and to do this hours and hours, because wrestling is a seven-day, three-hundred-and-sixty-five-days, you know, sport. So, one thing, I just want to congratulate them with that. And let's start off with the presentation. Ivan Zavala, this is Ivan Zavala, right here, the big man right here. First year wrestling, he's five years old, and currently in kindergarten. He wrestled six-under and thirty-seven-pound weight class. He placed fifth at Reno Worlds, and when I say Reno Worlds, it's everybody in the nation. On the season, he holds a record of thirty-four and seven. Thirty-five wins, thirty-seven losses. It's amazing, a record. He also plays fourth at the SE Way State Tournament. Let's give a hand to Ivan Zavala. The next athlete wrestler, Lexi Granillo. She is a three-year varsity wrestler. She is seventeen years old and currently a junior at CHS. She wrestled eighteen-and-under, a hundred-pound weight, weight class. She placed eighth at the Reno Worlds. She placed fif, she placed fifth, last year making her a second-time national placer. Congratulations, Lexi Granillo. Our next wrestler, Naieli Guerra Landa Gonzalez. Am I, did I say it right? Okay. I'm sorry. She is a three-year varsity wrestler. She is eighteen years old and a senior at CHS. She wrestled eighteen-and-under, a hundred-and-seven-pound weight, weight class. She finished eighth at the Reno Worlds. Last year, she finished eighth, making her a two-time national placer. Congratulations, Naieli. I'm missing one. Am I, did I leave one up there? Sorry. Do I have two? I think I do. Right?
Yeah, that one's true.
So, is it right? Hers, right? And last, Zulma Mendoza. Zulma Mendoza, she is a third-year varsity wrestler. She is seventeen years old and a senior at CHS. She wrestled eighteen-and-under, a hundred-and-twelve-pound weight class. She placed fifth at the Reno Worlds. Last year, she placed eighth, making her a two-time national placer. Congratulations, Zulma. Coach, you want to say something? No. Once again, thank you, and thank you to you and your staff. Keep it going.
Okay, next item is Employee of the Month for May two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you. So, our Employee of the Month for the month of May is someone who's always happy to come to work. He enjoys participating in the city's Christmas gift program, Reindeer Rounds, National Night Out, Read Across America, the Autism Walk, Down Syndrome Walk, the Elks Easter Egg Hunt, Storytime, the Fire Department's Open House Event, fire prevention programs, business inspections, career fairs, Fridays with Fire, and providing station tours. He loves serving the community, spreading joy to community members of all ages, and offering slobbery kisses. And our Employee of the Month for May of two thousand twenty-four is Murphy Milligan.
Murphy's speech. That was about as big of a speech as Murphy's.
Okay, now we're going to go ahead and move on to citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern, identify themselves, and use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes in accordance with state open meeting laws. No action will be taken by the city council this evening, and all items will be referred to staff for a follow-up and a report. Citizens' comments submitted in writing to the city clerk by 5:00 PM on the day of the city council meeting shall be distributed to the city council and included in the record, however, they will not be read. Anyone that'd like to come forward?
Can everyone hear me? Okay, awesome. Well, good evening, Mayor Horn, city council, and staff. Again, I'm Kyle Savage. I represent Congressman John Duarte from the area of Fresno County. And so, our office is proud to announce that Congressman Duarte and a bipartisan group of house colleagues recently introduced H.R. seventy-eight sixteen, the Clear Communications for Veterans Claims Act. This past month, the congressman hosted a roundtable and press conference on the bill with veteran stakeholders from across the Central Valley in Merced at American Legion Post eighty-three. Veterans and their families often struggle with the complexity of notice letters from the VA regarding benefit decisions, including those related to education, healthcare, and other services. The process by which veterans apply for and receive the benefits they earned and the course of their duty and service to this grateful nation is at best complicated, but at worst, broken. The VA should be able to clearly and concisely inform veterans of their status, of their veteran benefits and claims, and yet, these written notifications can lead to more questions. The congressman believes this is unacceptable. Congressman Duarte's Clear Communications for Veteran Claims Act aims to make these letters easier and simpler to understand by for two reasons. Requiring the VA secretary to enter into an agreement with a federally-funded research and development center to assess notice letters within thirty days after the act's enactment, and requiring the VA secretary, within ninety days of receiving the assessment, to submit the recommendations from the FFRDC to the Committees on Veteran Affairs in the Senate and the House, and to implement these recommendations. Congressman Duarte is always proud to stand with our nation's veterans. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Hilda Crawford with the Kalinga District Library, and I just want to let everybody know that both libraries, Kalinga and Huron, are gearing up for our summer reading program this year. Our theme is Read, Renew, and Repeat. And we'll be, starting on Saturday, June fifteenth, we're going to have our kickoff program, and we hope to have, well, we are going to have vehicles out there, and you can bring, the families can bring, come in with the whole family and sign up to join the, our summer reading program. And it goes until Saturday, July twenty-seventh, and our finale will be August third. All our programs will be on Saturdays. We're going to have entertainment and crafts every Saturday. I'm not certain about the times, but you can check our website for further information or call the library at nine-three-five-one-six-seven-six. And you can, once you sign up on that Saturday, the following Monday, you could begin reading, and then, if you've already read books, then you can come in on the Monday and start reporting. Each person that reports, each child, they'll get incentives. And then, at the end, you get a chance drawing of a raffle basket. We go from little babies all the way up to adults. So, and then, we have teens in between. So, if you come in, the children's, eleven and below will have three baskets. The teens, which is twelve to seventeen, will have two baskets, and then, the adults have one basket. So, just come in. You don't have to have a library card, you can read from home. If you're a baby or younger and you're not at the reading level yet or able to read on your own, a parent or a big sister can read to you. So, it's something fun to do during the summer. We try to get as many as kids, encourage all the kids to come in during the summer because they're out of school and this just keeps up the reading level. So, we hope to see everybody participate, hope to have everybody come in and enjoy our summer. So, thank you.
Quick question, Hilda, what was the beginning date?
June fifteenth, Saturday.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Hello. Tina Yaden with the Kalingas Gold Star Wellness Center. I just wanted to let everyone know we are working on our summer programs as well, events, and activities are rolling in by the day. So, the May classes that we currently have on the list are growing, so I don't even have a current list. But just a reminder, if you are Silver Sneakers eligible member with Medicare Advantage Plus, you get eight free fitness classes a month through our facility. That includes chair yoga, flow yoga, and in the summer, we're going to be opening up the pool for aqua yoga and aqua fitness. Tuesday nights, the flow yoga is at six PM, Tuesdays and Wednesdays. The chair yoga is at nine AM, Mondays and Wednesdays. This weekend, we are having an astrology workshop with Dr. Harris, who comes in from Fresno. We will be doing a Mother's Day theme, Making Bracelets, which is a free event for the community. You just need a RSVP for all of these free events. Vision board, we're going to be doing career vision boards, if you can dream it, and if you can dream it, creating a vision board for career exploration. Family yoga, family fun fitness with hula hoops, keepsake memory boxes with Four Mom, and Sewing One-O-One we have at the end of the month. And then, we do have some special therapists from the state hospital who are working on an event for Mental Health Awareness Month, and also, creating a display table, working with the local non-twelve-step programs, counseling programs that we offer here in Kalinga so that we can have a go-to spot for people who are dealing with mental health and those types of needs. So, if you have any questions, let me know, and if you need to get on the email list or want to text, Facebook, whatever you want to do to get information, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens like to speak? Seeing none, council? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item. Public hearing, we have none tonight. So item number five, consent calendar. We have 11 items tonight. What would council like to do?
So again, it's just gonna be for quick information, but I wanna pull items number 5.3, 5.8, 5.10, and 5.11.
Any others, council? Okay, first item, item number 5.3, Sean, for Councilman Vosberg.
Yeah, so, of course, I'm frustrated with this, that it just doesn't make sense that the Caltrans numbers don't warrant any kind of traffic control coming into town on the Jane Avenue. But yet, we have two sets of stoplights within a couple hundred yards of each other coming into the other side of town. And I just know that the, coming out to Jane, that there is a ton of traffic, a ton of traffic that I don't see going the other direction. So that's frustrating to know that we can't get a stop sign over there, but we have two, I mean, we can't get a stoplight coming into town on Jane, but yet we have two coming on the other side. And it's almost the same scenario, where you have residential on one side, you have absolutely, almost nothing on the other. And so I just, I'd like to further understand why this is. I understand that they did their numbers, but, and, but also, there's a little portion in here that says that that's not the only analysis that they use. So like, why is it that they felt like coming into town that we needed to stop twice on the opposite end of town with the 198, but coming into town on the Jane that we don't have to stop at all? I'd like to know that. In fact, you know what? I'd like to, I'd like to invite them to come to council and explain this to the people that live on the opposite end. That's what I'd like to do, because it doesn't make sense, and I'd like them to enlighten me, because maybe I just don't know. And that way, they, we can also invite the people from, that live in the area to come and express what they think about that as well. So I guess that's just my comment on that. I'm just frustrated over it, and...
I can, I can send out an email just inviting them to come and at least kinda ask, answer questions, and...
Yeah. A non, don't worry, it won't be a hostile situation. I know that I'm passionate about this, but we just really wanna know, like, what's going on.
Yeah, I can reach out to them.
All right. Well, Caltrans loves those roundabouts now. Matt was slow trying to...
They'll do a roundabout. They'll do a roundabout if you want a roundabout.
Thanks, Sean.
Okay, next item is item 5.8, Councilman Vosberg.
All right, so, my question on this is, this was applied for, it looks like it passed a water bond in 2020, and this is kinda the last part of the spending on that, is that correct?
No, there's still more money left.
There's still more money in this? Okay, so what, how long do we expect this project to take?
Almost a year.
Almost a year?
Yeah. Well, completion of construction is January, so about eight months.
I mean, that's not bad, to be honest with you.
A lot, well, even like the previous project, the TTHM project that we just filed the notice of completion on, the lead times on products, like, the screens themselves have to be manufactured back east, so that basically, a big lead time is getting those screens ordered, and then once the screens are here, install time's not too long. But you can see, start of construction is not until June, but that's gonna do some minor improvements, and then basically, there's a big lead time on the materials, and then they'll be able to finish construction in January.
All right.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item.
Move on to the next item. I was gonna pull it too, but Councilman Vosberg, 5.10.
No, go ahead, mayor.
So it says on here, direct staff and coordinate random DUI checkpoint events with California Highway Patrol within the city limits. Do we currently have officers that are certified for the breathalyzer? Okay. Is there any way that we can get with the commander at the Highway Patrol and see if we can maybe do a random, at any time, whatever you guys decide, a DUI checkpoint, one or possibly two, in the next year or two?
We can check with CHP, but I'm not sure if we could do a combined operation?
They have, they have here in the past. But it's just, it's been quite a few years, that's why I'm curious. We just, I don't know if it was just because of the funding, or we didn't have enough staff. But now that we've gotten to the point where we have enough staff, possibly doing one. And then if there's any cost?
There will be costs.
And then, along with that, I would just like to find out, just because I don't know, how many DUIs do we have, like, a year in Colinga?
Well, since I've been here, we have none.
None?
Check, I mean, checkpoints?
No, no, as in DUIs, like, yeah, yeah, no, I, that's what I wanted to look at, like, how many do we have, right?
I think weekly, I see the, in the watch reports, we usually have weekly a couple arrests.
Couple arrests?
I get you, that number, but I don't wanna see it all the time, DUIs.
So maybe if you just emailed us, then, I mean, doesn't have to come back, it's an agenda item or nothing. I'm just curious to know how many...
I can put that on the, up in the report.
That'd be awesome. Thank you so much.
Can you also put on there as well as how many accidents were involved with the DUIs and the DWIs? Okay, we'll move on to our next item, 5.11, Councilman Vosberg.
So, I know this is like penny-pinching at this point, but $600 for those two no parking signs, I feel like the developers, isn't that what this one is? They installed the two additional parking signs? Yeah. I feel like the developers should cover that cost. They were the ones who yanked them out. They yanked the signs out, they left them on the ground. I don't know what happened to them, but I don't think the city should have to front that. I think they should have to replace them. And, yeah. That's it. I just, I wanna request that we reach out to them to replace the signs, even though, you know, it seems like it's only 600 bucks. I mean, we wanna set the precedent to where that if you mess something up in part of development, that you have to fix it. So, that's it. I appreciate it.
Okay, what would council like to do, the consent calendar? We have a motion to approve?
I'm motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to our next item. We have one item for tonight's ordinance presentation discussion potential action items. Our first one, or our only one, is discussion, direction, and potential action regarding applying for encampment resolution funding program, round three.
Thank you. So at this time, there is no staff recommendation. This item is a portion of a future agenda item requested by Councilman Schindler regarding what could be done to assist community members currently residing in the creek bed. We've identified a ERF grant that the city may be able to apply for. However, the grant does have some great things about it and some not-so-great things about it. And so we have Jill connected via Zoom. Jill's with Blaze and Associates, and if we decided to move forward with applying for this grant, Jill and/or her staff would be the ones writing the grant on behalf of the city, and so she's on to sort of explain it and then answer any questions council has about the grant.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting me to join you tonight. I, I wanted to provide you with just a brief overview so that you could see what's, what's, what's available and what it takes to actually win this funding. So I think Larry's giving me the power to share my screen. Let's see, can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay. So the name of this grant is Encampment Resolution Funding, and as the title implies, its aim is to resolve or get rid of encampments and create connections, pathways to permanent housing, and places where people can, can be on a road to permanent housing. And this funding is divided into three rounds. We're on round three for this year, and those applications will be due in June, at the end of June. You have a lot of money, almost $300 million. 50% of that funding, though, is prioritized to get rid of encampments that are located on Caltrans right-of-way. So I think, you know, that's something to consider. You know that those projects are going to score the best and have the highest priority. And let's see, I'll move on to the next slide. We have a sample of a program that, a project that was funded for the city of Banning in Riverside County. This was for about $1 million, and Banning had two problematic encampments, one along a railroad and also the I-10 interchange. And so that one definitely got the priority point because they were resolving an encampment near an interstate on Caltrans right-of-way. And the other encampment that they were resolving was along Creek Bed, so, kinda similar to what I've heard about in Colinga. But this was a multifaceted program. Their $1 million was going to go to nonprofits and the county and several support agencies that would do outreach, and they also have a tiny home village called Opportunity Village, where those pallet shelters that you see on the bottom left-hand side of your screen, they started that village during the pandemic. It actually burned down one time because someone had a hot plate that got too close to a blanket, and they moved the Opportunity Village. But ever since they've opened it, they've had a waiting list. They had 20 pallet shelters. With this grant, they requested funds to have five more and expand their village so they could get a little bit more capacity. They also requested funding for safety and security cameras, security guards, a staff person to assist and monitor the activities there, and rapid rehousing funds were part of their grant, their grant rollout. So it was pretty comprehensive, and I have to tell you, it was a lot of work. It was a lot of work to apply, and it was a lot of work after they actually won the grant. So from my perspective, and I like to be completely honest with Colinga about the pros and cons, and help you evaluate whether this is truly a good fit for your city, and if it's something that you feel you can accomplish successfully and without too much stress. So the things that I think are pros and positive things about this grant, no local match. And they do have a significant amount of funding, so, so those are definitely things that are on the positive side. Recurring funding cycles, we're in round three, and we expect them to have another batch of funding coming up in the, in the subsequent years. The cons, however, the negative side of this grant application, I have to say, it is labor-intensive. So it requires, would require city staff to interview each of the encampment residents. You have to have some data about every person that is in an encampment in your city that you're trying to resolve, and it requires commitments from partner organizations that would be willing to help you. And we estimate on our side, the grant-writing labor would take about 100 hours to develop the application. It's ranging between 100 and 120 hours. So the BNA cost, our company, BNA, is about $15,000. So that's a significant investment. And your project must provide options for interim and permanent housing, and, and that's really challenging. Some cities just don't have emergency housing, and I know that Colinga's location makes it difficult for you to provide that within your city limits. So something to consider as well. This is a person-centered approach. Your project requires that you support the people in the encampment locations before you resolve them and get them into permanent housing. So that means providing trash receptacles, porta-potties, certain things at their encampment before it is completely done away with in lieu of permanent housing. And just a lot of staffing required to implement the project and manage a grant, quarterly reporting, and reimbursement requests. So I never say grants are easy money, there are always a lot of hard work. And then the thing that I think is probably also important to note is that even though some of our cities have been excited to win this grant, they found it extremely frustrating. Many homeless individuals don't, don't want to participate in the programs or the guidelines that they've established in their emergency housing. So they, they have, they have a hard time being successful, even when they win the grant. So I just have to be completely honest with you, and Marissa wanted me to, to share with you that overview. So can I answer any questions for you?
Yeah, I got a, I got a question, actually, a couple questions.
Okay.
Okay, right now, one of the governors, I'm not sure which one, the last few years, pretty much told every city and county in the state of California that if they were to help out the homeless, that he would pay them back. So far, we're between 22,000 and 25,000 just here in town, and we haven't seen a cent. Is this, are they gonna try to use this to pay this back, or is it completely separate?
I don't know about that, but I know that, you know, this is a significant budget appropriation. So it, it might have stemmed from that, that initiative through the governor's office, but yeah, good question.
Thank you.
So how long does the grant funding last? And who picks up the cost after that?
So it's a three-year grant program, and then, and then after that, there's not necessarily a requirement that you have to continue the programs that you started, but there is, you know, probably a likelihood that you're still going to have this ongoing problem even when the grant funding runs out after three years.
So what kind of, what kind of buy-in does the people that are being helped by this put in? Like, what kind of personal responsibility is involved with this type of funding?
Well, I think for the Banning example, the, they have a pretty, they have to sign a contract to live in that tiny home shelter, the emergency shelters, and they have to agree not to use drugs or alcohol while they're there. They have, have to agree to do job counseling and, and have an action plan for getting out of homelessness. So it comes with, you know, if, if they're going to get some services in the form of emergency housing, it's a sort of a two-way contract, and, and they are required to, to do their part. And that, again, happens during the three-year grant period, but after the grant runs out, and, you know, if, if the city is not running their emergency shelter anymore, I think those agreements would dissolve.
This is a question, I don't know if you can answer it or Marissa, but what's already being done to help the people on the outskirts of our town?
So I actually had a meeting, I don't remember if it was Monday or Tuesday, but it was either Monday or Tuesday of this week, with the deputy county administrative officer and Fresno County Housing Authority. They came out to Colinga, actually, and we went over what services are currently being provided. And some of what we could apply for with that grant is already being done. So what I was told is that Fresno County contracts with King's View and with the Pavarello House, and the Pavarello House comes out to Colinga once a month, and they go out to the creek bed to make contact with even individuals out there. They did say that there are some areas of the creek bed they're unable to access because a lot of the individuals out there now have guard dogs, and so they can't get close to their encampments. However, of the ones that they are able to make contact with, that they will sometimes accept food and water, and occasionally hygiene items, but they will not accept clothing or any sort of services. They offer them transportation services, to medical appointments, to mental health visits, substance abuse, to apply for social security or social service benefits, or even to reconnect with family members. And they decline those services, they decline shelter, they have even said that they get temporary motel vouchers, and they decline those. And then King's View comes out one to two times per week. King's View, they report, has a little bit better ability to connect... King's View, they report, has a little bit better ability to connect with them because they don't come in a marked car. I guess the Pavarello House has a marked car, so people tend to scatter when they see them drive up. But King's View comes out in an unmarked car and then they approach the individuals in the creek bed and offer the same types of services. And again, they also report that they'll accept food and water, but they don't want any of the other services. One thing that kind of concerns me with the grant too, so it's a major concern that the grant funding is for three years because I think if we're going to do it, it needs to be a long-term commitment. We can't do it for three years and then have this investment of these tiny homes that we just abandon and, you know, they're just there as an eyesore. So I think that if it's something we're going to do, we have to continue it, at which point then it would become a general fund expense. And what is concerning is that a lot of what we would do with the grant is already being done. I mean, maybe we'd be able to do it more frequently, but it may not change the outcome. If people don't want the services, they probably won't want them even if we ask them more times if they want them. And so that's a concern. The other part of it is the wraparound services that are required. So we don't have a nonprofit that operates with its mission to provide these types of services in Colinga. And so we have two options. We either find one out of Fresno or another neighboring community and ask them to come provide these services, or we create our own city department and do it ourselves. And so at the end of those three years, if we did it ourselves, then we'd have this mass layoff of this department of people if we could no longer fund it, or we would continue funding it with the general fund. And so there is a lot of concerns. I, I think it's, it has great parts of the grant. I mean, it's, it's there, there's a lot of funding and there's opportunities to do things, but the requirements of the grant and then the short period of time that it's funded makes it difficult. And the other thing is the path to permanent housing, I think, is a difficulty because Fresno Housing Authority was in the meeting and they let me know that we have nine community members currently who have Section Eight vouchers that cannot find a place to rent in Colinga. And so a path to permanent housing is difficult because we don't have landlords, many landlords that either have vacancies or are willing to rent to people who have these housing vouchers from the housing authority. And so then we're going to apply for a grant and we may be able to provide temporary housing, but we wouldn't have that path to permanent housing because we have a lack of housing here.
So.
Yeah, so it's, it's my understanding that they're already like rented and so that won't impact the nine individuals that are waiting. And they're not specific to Fresno Housing Authority vouchers.
So that's kind of my concern is that the, that we have to have the interim type of housing and then we have to have a path to permanent housing. We don't have those things for people who can currently afford housing. We currently don't. I mean, housing is, is really high here because we don't have a lot of housing. And to be honest with you, the more people that want to build affordable housing takes away from everybody that, the single housing. If the contractor can get the price for super cheap, they can get the land for super cheap, they can get a covenant and they can get paid, then they go to places that have a lot of people that can fill up those. And unfortunately, I don't understand why, but Colinga is not a destination for that. We try our best to get those folks to come in, to be able to build affordable housing. I know that it's kind of like a NIMBY situation where not everyone wants it in their backyard. Seems like District Three has been the place to put them and it's been quite a few. And, you know, we, if you ask the residents, they will tell you that there has been a significant amount of crime into those areas. And so it's actually caused certain people to move out of areas, certain areas, because they don't want that. And that's sad. I think one of the biggest problems in this situation is, and I don't think this has changed much, but the Pavarello House, a couple of years, probably like maybe ten years ago, did a study and they went out and they found out, what they had found was, I remember Steve Brondo talking about this on KMJ, the exact numbers were that ninety percent plus of the people that are homeless are mentally ill, addicted to drugs. They have a problem with meth, they have a problem with other drugs, and now because of that, they're mentally ill. And vice versa, they were mentally ill, so they did the drugs in the first place and that made it worse. And so until we triage that problem, we're going to see this scenario where people don't want help. I actually went out myself, probably five years ago with Councilman Atkinson and my wife and Westside Services, and we tried to count the homeless when we went out there because we wanted to try, it was during the time where they were doing census numbers and we were told that by Fresno County, that we need to go out there and find the folks that are, that are home, that are not housed. That way that we can apply, tell them, hey, look, this is, we have an unhoused population and we deserve some of this money that they're getting. Well, from my understanding, as soon as they realized that we were going to come, like you had said, or like you had said, that they fled and they didn't want to be counted. And even people that we knew that were homeless, and I asked if they were homeless, they said no. And I knew they were homeless, but they didn't want the help, they didn't want the services. I'm not saying that nobody does and there are some services available for those people. Can we do a better job? Yes. It really kind of sucks that the, that the state gives the money to the county and the county takes the money and does what they want with it. And a lot of times, it seems like it doesn't come to Colinga. And I'm the biggest proponent of saying, hey, like, county's not doing their job, but now looking at this information, the county is coming out and the folks are just refusing the services. And so, this is a hard one. I mean, this is a tough one. We don't have the ability to meet the portions of the grant that talk about that we need to provide a permanent housing solution. And we don't have the temporary housing solution to do it either. So, you know, I, I don't, it's frustrating. I, I know that there's things that we can do on the local level to help, you know, with certain factors of mitigation from being unhoused that we can help with. That may be a cheaper route than going this route, that we can keep going on in the future if we did plan for that. Something like bathrooms, something like trash services, things like that, you know? And is it, maybe there's a grant that offers that kind of opportunity, you know, where we could get that? I don't know. But this just doesn't seem like that it's going to fit for our needs. Or what we can do, actually. Just my concerns.
If, if they're already being offered services and they're not taking it, the best we can do is have the information down here for somebody if they need it to put them to the right, uh, people. So, you know, our kiosks that we're putting up could have that information on there. But if they're not wanting it, you know, a million dollars doesn't help somebody that doesn't want the help. It just doesn't matter.
Yeah, maybe get some more information as well, not only down here to the city, but to the churches and other places that actually do the food drives a couple of times a month. That would be another way to get the information out there.
So another thing I'm curious about is like, those creek beds change in who actually is in charge of them depending on whether they have water in them or not. And depending on how close to the water you are and depending on what type of season it is. So like, when you're looking at responsibility, you know, what kind of responsibility lies between the feds and the county? And because from what I understand, the feds are the ones saying that, hey, when there's water in them, then it's a resource that everyone has to be able to use. So what type of responsibility do they have at that point as well?
So I was told by the county that there, a lot of the creek is owned privately and they're in the process of the abatement, they're in the abatement process with the private property owners for the creek bed. So we may be seeing some movement with them cleaning up the creeks. At which point, they would offer displacement services for the individuals that are living out there. But again, it's up to them to accept those services or not.
Well, and I know this kind of may sound heartless to like people listening, but our government's invited people here to exacerbate this problem. And I know firsthand because my sister moved here from Nebraska because she was allowed to be a homeless drug addict. And that hurts, that's right here at home. But I can't help her, she won't take help, she refuses, she will not take help. What she wants is a place to live and a place to stay and someone to play for her food and someone to pay, to give her a little bit of money so she can continue to do drugs. And it's a horrible deal. So I just want everyone to know that I'm firsthand on this, you know, paying attention and watching if there was something I could do. I mean, if the, if the governor's program where they were forcing people to get help came in, I'd be the first person to call and force her to get help. But I think during the conversation that we did have, because I dropped in on the conversation with the county, I just happened to be here. And there was some light at the end of the hope. There was what, the CARES Act that they were, that they were talking about? And then there was a, a new proposition that they were trying to put forward. Can you explain those, Marissa?
Yes, so Fresno County is going live with their version of the program. I don't remember what the name of it is offhand, but they go live in December. And I guess it will allow someone to be assigned as a conservator over someone and the county can become a conservator so they can take control of an individual that's unable to care for themselves without that individual being able to refuse services. They have to meet certain criteria, but Fresno County is going live in December. I guess some of the counties already started this past January.
And just, I mean, even if we choose not to move forward with this, this doesn't mean we're not, that we're going to stop looking for solutions. I mean, I think all of us up here are interested in finding a solution that meets what we can do, right? I mean, I don't want people watching at home to think that, hey, we're, you know, not willing to help. I mean, because I, and I know there's a lot of groups out here that absolutely do help. You know, we have the Ruthie Bottle Water Project, we have Sea Sky Shelter, we have places like that that actually go out there and do a lot of help with these people. I believe the Filipino community has probably been involved in, in type of that. So we, and then the Westside Family Services has been involved in that. So, you know, we do try and offer help. And now that I understand the county's coming out too, you know, maybe we can work on trying to get these agencies and the folks in, in a better way to help them. I just don't know if this grant's going to do it.
Scott?
Scott Netherton, Citizen, 424 College. I didn't have a question about this till I was reading the presentation. One thing that concerns me is, I know Councilman Schindler, when he brought this, you know, because we discussed a little bit, he has a heart for the people there. There was one instance where a family was displaced by a fire and their, next day they're homeless. There should be something the city can do to help with that, even county to help. But these people that are living out there, a lot of them, like you said, don't want help. And something she had in her presentation was, part of this funding was that you set up safe substance abuse or safe substance use area. I don't see why the city should be involved in something like that personally. If I'm sitting at home shooting up heroin, some police officer walks in, I'm going to jail. It's illegal. And I don't see why a state-funded project should include requiring that we set up something that would, you know, just basically exacerbate that and encourage it. That's my personal opinion. Thank you.
I have a, I have another quick question. So the governor right now is working on a bill to pass it, just like the will, the bill in Oregon where illicit drugs are no longer illegal. What would this program, how would it work if he ends up getting that passed somehow, somehow? Because Oregon's already reversing it because they, they realize that they screwed up.
Yeah.
Well, they thought it was going to prevent ODs and it actually multiplied by a hundred. They got that wrong.
I don't know the answer to that one, if that was to me.
Any more questions, council?
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you for having me. Maybe I can come back sometime and talk about something that is a good fit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
None, okay. We'll go ahead and move on to our next item, city manager's announcements.
Thank you. I said at our previous budget workshop, but I'll repeat it just because there's a few new people here. So on the city's Facebook page today, I shared some information on assistance for residents with paying electricity bills or city utility bills. The information's on the city Facebook page. And there's also information on there that Fresno EOC has a text number that teens can text if they need counseling service or someone to talk to. And so all of that information is shared on the city's Facebook page.
Council have any announcements or reports?
I just got one. You could get on your phone and vote for the mascot, the national mascot. Okay, we're, we're on the lead, so keep on voting. You can vote and vote and vote and vote. So let's get that win.
I think it was today at six. Nine o'clock our time, yeah.
Any other, council? None? And I have none as well. Are there any future agenda items at this time?
I have one. I'd like to see about if the city could look into what it would take to help the park and rec get their restrooms up and running. Because that seems like a cheap option that we could work with to try and at least get some services for people that need to use the restroom. Because I know that we don't have a lot of restrooms in town that are open to the public, so.
Any other items, council? Okay, I have none as well. That being said, we have a closed session, we have two items for tonight. Next meeting is May sixteenth. We're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Have a good night.